Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 5, 2020. If you would all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have changes this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I would recommend that the council add an excused absence for Councilmember Tom- Thomas who's unable to attend because of a medical issue.
All right, so we'll add that to the consent calendar?
As item zero.
Okay. Oh?
I'm sorry, oh. Looks a lot like a zero.
All right, we will add that item to the agenda. Any other changes? All right, seeing none, a motion would be in order?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The agenda has been updated. All right, moving into public communications, we have a whole list this evening of some great things to celebrate and information at the council meeting and recognition of some returning volunteers as well as new volunteers. We're going to start, though, with our 2021 Employee of the Year Award. So last week, at an employee breakfast, we announced that Janine Johnstone is our 2021 Employee of the Year. So each month, city employees get together, nominate one of their coworkers to be Employee of the Month, and from that pool, at the end of the year, it's voted on for our Employee of the Year. So while I'm reading a little bit of information about Janine, I know that Judge Gipe is here this evening to say a few words. So if you want to work your way up to the podium, I will give some high-level information, and then we'll recognize Janine. Good evening. Janine was our March Employee of the Month, and like I said, now our 2021 Employee of the Year. She was hired on June 12, 2000, as a temporary probationary police officer. That same year, November 16, 2000, she became a full-time probation officer. She was promoted to her current position as the probation supervisor at the Kent Municipal Court on February 1, 2007. As a probation supervisor, Janine is responsible for overseeing staff and the timely and accurate administration of probation services and functions for the City of Kent Municipal Court. I want to say, one of the things that we found out in the nomination is that of all of the positive attributes that make Janine such a great leader, they also enable her to supervise defendants at a very high level, and that both serves public safety requirements while at the same time leading our defendants towards successful outcomes, and I think that's a really important key in this whole process. Janine's understanding of policy, procedures, resources, and best practices in the field of probation are second to none, and she continuously embraces our values, and we want to celebrate her as Employee of the Year. With that, I'll turn it over to Judge Gipe.
Thank you. Mayor Ralph, Council President Boyce, council members, thank you for the opportunity. My greetings on behalf of the court, Presiding Judge Michael Franz, and our Court Administrator Margaret Yeder. I've known Janine ever since I started to work at the court, even when I was a pro temp judge there. The thing that comes to mind of all of her fabulous qualities is she's positive. Her coworkers often say, if she's ever had a bad day in the court, no one's seen it. Even if she's, they never see her angry or upset, and she leads with a positive attitude. I also want to commend her, in addition to all of her other responsibilities, when the court started its second DUI court grant funding, she stood up to be our court grant administrator. She's doing a great job with it, wearing multiple hats. And generally, the only other thing I can really say about Janine is she is unequivocally awesome. So...
I need a stepstool back here. I just want to say thank you. This is such a wonderful place to work. I have such amazing coworkers and colleagues and support from our judges and court administrator, and our probation department is pretty amazing. We have some really outstanding staff that make it extremely easy for me to do my job. And it's not an understatement to say that it is a joy to come to work every day, to be able to work with the people that I do. So this is, this is pretty, pretty great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And unequivocally awesome, was that the quote? All right, I think that that says it all. Thank you, Janine, so much for everything you do for all of our, our folks that are in our court system and our residents here in the City of Kent. We're very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we are going to move on to our April 2022 Employee of the Month. So I am pleased to announce that Michael Mage is our April Employee of the Month. Michael was hired on May 16, 2017, as an IT trainer. Michael, that feels like a million years ago when that was your, when that was your title. His position was reclassed to a technical writer on June 1 of 2018, and on April 16, 2019, he was promoted into his current, current position as our Government Performance Coordinator here at the City of Kent in the Human Resources Department. As our Government Performance Coordinator, Michael leads, directs, plans, and organizes the city's Lean Business Process Improvement Program and Performance Measure process for significant impact to the city and its residents and customers. So council, you've seen that amazing dashboard that's been developed and all the work that's been done. It doesn't say "cat herding" on here, so I'm going to throw that in because I think that's a lot of what, what Michael does in getting everybody moving in, in the same direction. So the, my notes say, "The incumbent will lead the development implementation and continuous improvement of strategic initiatives and business operations, and is a subject matter expert in organizing, leading, facilitating, and consulting on performance measures." Michael was nominated because he exemplifies integrity as he does the right thing even when no one is looking, and I think that that is an absolutely true statement. Always the consummate professional, his care for those he serves is evident. He has been an instrumental part of each team he has been a part of and encourages everyone on that team. Michael is a creative problem solver who's, who innovatively finds a way to accomplish each task with finesse, and his level of achievement is inspiring. He continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate Michael as April's Employee of the Month. And Teri Smith, our HR Director, is going to be here to say some more nice words about Michael.
Couple of more. I, I actually had, Judge Gipe wrote down, but I'm not going to steal that. It belongs to Janine. No, Michael is a fabulous employee. We are thrilled to have him in HR. Sorry, IT, he left you, but he's, he continues to work with IT. He continues to be the employee that helps. I think one of the descriptors here is, he works with everybody on the technology spectrum, from the newbies to the very qualified and advanced people. He's very patient and caring. And herding cats, I would say, is probably something that should be in his job description because trying to, especially through COVID, gather people together in a remote environment, which he was very well-versed at using and training all of us how to use, it was very difficult and challenging, yet he did it. And he's working with all city departments through their improvement projects. He's done everything from our fleet program to our parks temporary hiring initiative to, oh my gosh, the drainage billing. I mean, that's, who would have thought that would be a project? But Michael does it with grace and finesse and care and compassion. And as the mayor said, he does exemplify integrity. He does the right thing when no one's looking. I see that every day I am with him. So I just can't say enough about what an honor it is to have Michael as the April 2022 Employee of the Month in HR.
Thank you very much. I'll just say, as a professional cat herder, I get to herd some pretty cool cats. So it's always, as someone who supports the work of others, is a pleasure to really dig into other people's domain of expertise and really learn from our other city employees. So thanks for that. It is a joy, and I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, from mov- moving on from our amazing employees to our amazing volunteers. Here at the City of Kent, we have multiple boards and commissions, and those are citizens' advisory groups that help lead us in a variety of things, whether it be our Human Services Commission, Land Use and Planning, our Arts Commission, or tonight, we're going to be, I'm asking council for confirmation of some appointments to our Bicycle Advisory Board to start. Our Bicycle Advisory Board weighs in on things like, where should we have bike paths? What, what do we need to do to make them safer, both for residents that are using bicycling for recreation or commuting? We have a variety of great facilities here in Kent, but we also know that there's gaps in our system, and it's important that we have the input from those that are using that system to make it a safer, more effective mode of transportation here in the City of Kent. So I'm going to start with a reappointment of Connie Stulp and Wendy Graves to second terms on our Bicycle Advisory Board. And then we have four new appointments this evening, and I think some of you are here in the audience, and if you would like to come up and say a few words after I name everybody off, tell us a little bit why you are wanting to be a volunteer on our Bicycle Advisory Board. That is great. I also know that I never put anybody on the spot, so don't feel like you have to come up because it can be a little intimidating standing up here. So we've got four new appointments. Jeff Culver, who I met earlier in the lobby, Steve Burke, Brian Smith, and Mac Middleton. So if you're in the room, if you could raise your hand one more time for us, thank you. It looks like we've got two of our, our new appointees here on the consent calendar is the confirmation for that, for council to approve, and there are bios in the packet. So want to say welcome and thank you so very much for volunteering. All right, our next board is our Parks and Rec Commission. So this is a group of volunteers that help us with all things park-related, both our facilities and our programming, under the leadership of our Parks Director Julie Periscondola. Just help us understand, again, the needs in the community and the expectations for our park system. We are, we've got four new appointees this evening, and my notes say that all of them are prepared to say a few words. So if you want to make your way up here to the podium, we've got Beth Carter, Michael Javelli, Takim, and Matthew Morgan. That will be pending council's approval, appointed to our Parks and Recreation Commission. Do you want to come up and state your name and just give us a, a quick minute on why you, why you want to be a part of our Parks and Rec Commission?
Well, Mayor Ralph, President Boyce, and members of the council, my name is Beth Carter. My husband and I have lived in Kent for 36 years. We raised our children here, and we're so pleasantly surprised to see the expanse of parks and recreation activities in Kent. It was kind of like a treasure hunt, raising kids to find new parks all over the place. In particular, our oldest daughter is developmentally disabled, and she has, the adaptive programs through Kent Parks and Rec have created for her a community that I don't know that she would have otherwise had. So she is a firm believer in Kent parks. So I feel like after all that we've received from Kent in 36 years here, it's time to give back because parks are one of those hidden treasures in communities that help bring people together and gather communities. So thank you for this opportunity.
Proud of the work that we're able to do in that arena. So thank you for, for being a part, for your family being a participant and recognizing that program. It's important.
Madam Mayor, Council, President Boyce, thank you for having me, and thank you for letting me on this commission. I applied for the commission because I believe that the people are the ultimate decider of what is created. We elect, we elect you, and we want to have our own sort of rules that we have in our, in our society. I'm not making a lot of sa- you can tell this is off the cuff, right? But basically, the government should serve us, right? And if the government doesn't serve us, why, why do we have it? And I think these boards are a perfect example of, of how we should be getting the community involved in the government. I personally have lived in Kent my entire life. I'm 23 years old. I had my mother, who was big working with Kent for Health, back when we did Kent for Health under Mayor Suzette Cook. I worked for Kent for Health as well. I played a bunch of baseball when I was growing up, especially in high school. I could have made the high school team. I chose not to because I wanted to go in a less competitive environment. Honestly, I had quite a bit of fun, and that was all through Kent Parks. And I just kind of want to give back, and I want to show that, you know, people my age who usually don't get a lot of representation and are mostly what are going to be using some of those services, like the Parks and Recs, especially like youth sports and stuff, I want to be that kind of spokesperson for them. Anyways, thank you for your time, all, and thank you for having me.
Madam Mayor?
Good evening.
Council President Boyce, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Takim. I'm a local bar and grill owner in Kent for the last 30 years. I'm an immigrant, and I volunteer for this position because this community helped make livelihoods for my family for the last 30 years, and I want to give it back. And another reason for, for volunteering for this position is I have two daughters, and they, they don't have kids yet, but they will. And I worry for the sustainability and the climate issue that is facing us all. So I would like to bring a different perspective from a business owner and as an immigrant and as a part of the community. I'll quit right here, and thank you for this opportunity. I'll take, I'll answer any questions you have.
And aren't, aren't you a graduate of Kent 101?
Yes, I am. Yes, yes.
So that's a fabulous place to learn about these boards and commissions.
This is one of the reasons that this happened in 12 months since Kent 101.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is, you were right, this is intimidating, being up here staring at everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Morgan. I've lived in Kent since May of last year. For me, being part of this Parks and Recreation Commission ties into the future for what I hope to have for my family and the area. My fiancee and I getting married in a month, just a month from now. Not nervous at all. Really important to us to have an environment where we can raise a family, where we have space to go, get outside with our dogs, spend time together. For me, growing up, parks were huge. My parents, both being employed, my sister and I going and being part of soccer, baseball, whatever the, whatever the season was. And it's really important for me now, I guess, a little middle age coming out of my mouth sounds kind of rough to say, but being middle aged, it's really important to start finding ways to give back to the community for me. And I think this Parks and Recreation Commission is a perfect opportunity to do exactly that with my love for the outdoors and the love for giving back to the community. So super jazz to be part of the opportunity. And thank you, everyone, for letting me come up here and make a fool of myself. Appreciate you.
You did great. I'm going to guess that Julie might ask for wedding photos. Just going to say. Thank you to all of our, our volunteers for really stepping up and helping guide the city and make it a place that, that you want to live and that you're proud of and, and making the difference. It really is work that we cannot do without that help. So very, very grateful. We have one final reappointment this evening, and it's for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And this is a group that helps determine where the lodging tax revenue that comes into the city is spent. So it's got to be relating to tourism, heads in beds is sort of the term that's used, and money that helps to bring, think softball tournaments or robotics competitions or all a variety of things to the city. The marquee sign at Showware Center was a purchase made by lodging, with lodging tax dollars years ago. So we are, I'm asking for the reappointment of Andrew Hutchinson to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The rules of that committee are, are pretty specific on members representing specific sectors of, of that industry, and Andrew is one of our local hoteliers. So asking for a reappointment on, again, on the consent calendar. All right, the next item we have, we've got a couple of proclamations. First proclamation we have is for Distracted Driving Awareness Month. So hopefully, you've been seeing some of the media coverage, State Patrol, variety of agencies are doing distracted driving patrols to help remind us to put that phone down when we get in the car, put it in the glove box. That's what I used to tell my kids when they first got their driver's licenses. Just might throw that in there. And maybe tested once or twice. If they answered too quickly, then I knew that they weren't doing what they were supposed to. So we'll read this proclamation, and we've got Chief Aaron Tyreman from the Puget Sound RFA here to speak to the proclamation. So whereas distracted driving claimed over 3,000 lives nationally and over 286,000 people were injured in distracted driving accidents in 2019, and whereas any time you divert your attention from driving, you are distracted. That includes texting, talking, using your phone, adjusting the radio, setting your navigation, applying makeup, I do not recommend that that be done while you're driving, eating or drinking. And whereas Kent residents and all Americans deserve to live in communities that promote safe driving behaviors and healthy lifestyles, and whereas preventing distracted driving, injuries, and deaths requires the cooperation of all levels of government, employers, and the general public, and whereas the national- And whereas the National Safety Council and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration provide this nation with a month-long distracted driving public education campaign in April, and whereas spring is the time when people begin to log more miles on the road, and it is imperative to focus attention on the motor vehicle to prevent injuries and deaths. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of the City of Kent, do hereby proclaim April 2022 to be Distracted Driving Awareness Month in Kent, Washington, and strongly urge the residents of Kent to observe Distracted Driving Awareness Month by practicing safe driving behaviors and pledging to drive distraction-free.
Well, thank you, Mayor Ralph, President Boyce, and the honorable board. We have seen over the last several years the number of auto accidents that have, that have been accompanied by distracted drivers, and the main culprit, as Mayor Ralph alluded to, was cell phones. And the, what we tell people is, driving while being on your cellphone is, cellphone is impaired driving. And we wouldn't tolerate that for, for somebody going out and driving impaired if it was under the influence of drugs or alcohol. And so it was what we tell our kids. Our community risk reduction teams, specifically our public educators, do a great job of getting into the school and, and teaching kids, especially when they're getting close to driving ages, put your phone down, put it in the glove box, turn it off. There's nothing that's, that's that important, because we don't want to see you end up as a statistic. So this is, you know, as far as reducing the number of traffic accidents and traffic fatalities, this is, this is a powerful proclamation and proud to be a part of it. So thank you for this. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. The next proclamation we have is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas by definition, sexual violence is any unwanted sexual contact either in person or online, including sexual assault, harassment, and abuse. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the impact of sexual violence in communities across the state and nation, raising public awareness and educating communities on how to prevent it. And whereas in state of Washington, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And 29% of the survivors who are supported by community sexual assault organizations statewide identified as Black, Indigenous, and people of color in 2019. And those identifying ethnicity, 21% identified as Latinx or Hispanic. And whereas rape is the most under-reported crime for many reasons, including victims' fear of being disbelieved or further traumatization within the legal system. Additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism further oppress and silence victims. And whereas 41% of Americans have been personally subjected to harassing behavior online, and people from historically oppressed groups are more likely to experience online harassment, mirroring inequities we see elsewhere in society. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on adults, youth, and children include fear, concern for safety, physical and mental health conditions, including symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And working, whereas working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, join advocates and communities through, throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2022 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Kent. Together, we commit to a safer future for all of our children, young people, adults, and families in our community. This proclamation is something that the City of Kent has been doing for many years, and in part, it's because of our former colleague, Councilmember Dennis Higgins. Dennis was going to be here tonight to accept this proclamation, but he got stuck on the other side of the mountains. I don't know if you all saw the snow on Snow Call Me Pass yesterday, but Dennis asked that I accept this on his behalf, and I just want to take a minute. When I first came onto council, Dennis invited me to a fundraising breakfast for an organization called CASEARC, King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. We are so fortunate in King County to have an organization like CASEARC that provides resources to families and victims of sexual assault and sexual violence. They provide advocacy through the legal process, counseling, any kinds of services that you can imagine, and they do it in multiple languages, in culturally appropriate ways. And they really help people that are the victims become advocates and become survivors. I can tell you, through hearing the stories at those fundraising breakfasts and talking to folks that have used the services of CASEARC, it's, it's encouraging and it's hopeful. And those are not generally words you think of when you think of things like rape. CASEARC empowers people to, again, to be survivors. And I am so grateful that we have that organization here in King County, helping our, helping our residents. And again, Councilmember Higgins has been a very important part of that organization in bringing awareness to this. Want to say thank you to him and CASEARC, all of the volunteers and supporters. And their, their phrase is be loud. And so I want to encourage everyone, not just in the month of April, but every month, to be loud and stand in support of victims of sexual violence and be loud against those that would commit such horrible things against other human beings. So with that, thank you to Dennis, thank you to CASEARC, and remember, be loud. All right. We are going to move on to community events. I'm going to look to President Boyce to talk a little bit about some of the things going on in the community.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I get started, how many of you guys have attended a Seattle Thunderbird game? Raise your hand. Well, we got a hand for, well, listen up. They are about to make the playoff. And you haven't seen them play, you have an opportunity to go see them play before the playoffs start. They do have a game on Saturday, April night, and then they're going to play again on April 10th. So they play in Spokane Chief on April night, and then Everett Civil on the 10th. And then after that, they decide where they're going to be off in the playoffs. So nice facility, nice opportunity to go and support our local team here. Also, the Labor Council Career Fair will be Thursday, April 28th. We have Awakened Musical Festival on Saturday, May 21st. And we have this new football league called the X League. They're playing at the Showware Accesso on Saturday, June 25th. And it's the Seattle Thunder against the Devil Rush, and that's going to be a back-to-back game. And we have a concert coming out there, October 15th, is Gloria Trevi Divino World Tour. So Saturday, October 15th, lots of stuff going on at the Showware Center. So please go visit their site, which is www.assessorshowwarecenter.com. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Michelle?
Yes, I have two volunteer events for Kent Parks. They're conservation, environmental conservation events. And the first one is on Earth Day, and that's Saturday, April 23rd, at Clark Lake Park from 9:00 to noon. And then there's also an Arbor Day event on Saturday, April 30th, from 9:00 to noon at Riverview Park. And if you're interested, you can go online to sign up.
All right. Thank you. Any other community events?
Let me down.
Spotlight series is done. All right. We are going to move on to our next, next item, and that is a Parks seasonal staffing update. Joining us is our Parks Director Julie Perescondola to talk a little bit about the state of hiring and the need for folks to apply to help us with our parks programs through the summer.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and council and community members. So if you know anybody, we're hiring. That's the whole point of the video, so please spread the word for us. What I'm going to do tonight is really just share what positions we have available, what we are doing aggressively trying to recruit, and then let you all know what may happen if we cannot get the staffing that we may need and so on. And happy to answer any questions at the end. First, just a reminder, we have 115 career staff in the department, all over six different divisions. We hire about 250 to 320 seasonal temporary staff every year, not all at once, of course, but throughout the whole year. And then on top of that, we also have a need for hiring volunteers, for coaches and a whole bunch of different things, around 100 or more each programming cycle. So it's not even just hiring. We have another need for just engagement of active adults and people willing and interested in hiring and working for us. So we have two different types of areas. We have maintenance, part-time staff that really help with seasonal demand and pickup, and then we, of course, have recreation. So you can see here a little bit of graphic, happy to pass this out later if anybody's interested. We have park operations and maintenance, and in this particular area, it's probably one of our highest demands, right behind police. We have shift coverage, we have to cover between 6:00 AM to midnight, seven days a week. So we need a lot of bodies to help cover that program area. We have, at this point, in park operations, been in mandatory overtime for the last three years because we cannot get enough seasonal staff. So our career staff are really at risk of burnout right now because we have to keep working them more and more to cover all of the needs that we have. Most park operations positions or maintenance positions, you do have to be 18 to be able to work. That's a risk assessment we've done years ago. We do have progressive pay scales. We do have pay up here. We do, our maintenance staff is anywhere from 20, 80 an hour to 23. I just wanted to point out, on this type of wage, this isn't necessarily meant as primary career positions. It's supplemental wage, it's new college students, that type of thing coming up. So we'll look at that, but really, it's very competitive and high, you know, minimum wage is not that. And so we are definitely looking at the market constantly. Self-transportation is mandatory. We have a lot of things in the bus lines, for sure, and people can direct go, but we do have, transportation is going to be a challenge in some areas for hiring. We do have, we do require by the nature of what we do and the populations that we serve, we do have background checks, drug tests, and driving abstracts if you're driving city vehicles. So that sometimes can be a barrier, but that's what we need because we're working with youth or people with disabilities, so we can't, we can't reduce that at all. We have anywhere from positions, anywhere from 20 hours a week to 40 hours a week in maintenance, and then these are Teamster Union positions as well. So you can see anywhere I have little, you know, blue people on there, that is people that we hire under, from 16 to 18. So that's youth employment. City of Kent Parks is actually one of the highest youth providers for employment in the city, and we're very proud of that. We work with our kids to really teach them ethics and work and what FICA is and all that taxing stuff, and what it's like to be a good teammate and all that kind of thing. So we're very patient with our people there. Right now, Park Ops is down 10. We're still recruiting for another 10 positions, and it's, it's challenging. On average, Garen and his team spend maybe 500, 600 hours a year on recruitment, and that's just trying to get the, the people in. We've even had it where we even have people fully uniformed and ready to start, and they leave and they go find others. So it's, it's been very challenging. Riverbend Golf Course is the same thing. They have maintenance staff also that work in the grounds and driving range and so on, but we also have cashiering there, card attendance, other things that youth employers can come in. Those all start at $18 an hour, so very competitive as well. Riverbend, a little bit more successful. It's cool to work at the golf course, so they get a lot, and they've got a lot of returning type of turnaround for golf. So right now, we're actually okay at Riverbend, but by all means, we might have turnover, so take a look there. Recreation by far is the most challenging. As you can see, we are blanketed because we offer, you know, thousands of programs, and so we have a lot of need across the city in regards to part-time staff and seasonal staff coming on. Same thing here, really, coverage varies. It's weekday, it's weekends, it's evenings. It just depends which program area that you're actually getting in. We actually try to hire part-time that then work multiple positions throughout the year, so we try to leverage, you know, that. Each position does have progressive pay, so if you're here repetitively or returning, you keep going up. We're actually exploring something now, we hope to do, is not a signing bonus, but more of a staying bonus, where your pay will escalate the longer that you stay, so you earn the most at the end. Because we have seen where we are hiring people in, and they, they just leave, and we're in the middle of programs, and parents, and everybody's relying on us, and we can't have that way. And so we're trying to keep people as best that we can. Self-transportation is also a requirement in some of these areas. Some places, you could just be dropped off by parents or take bus lines. It just depends on the position. Background checks, drug round, drug checks, and so on. And then in these, we also have anywhere from 10 hours to 32. It just depends on the need. We do hire our recreation programs by cycle, which I'll explain in a minute. And what's cool about the recreation division is all those little areas in blue, some of them, we even hire 14 and 15-year-olds, mostly with youth sports officiating. So if you, you know, you can't work them past 7:30, you have rules, but you can start having even younger than 16, have some fun and earn some summer wage instead of mowing lawns. They can come out and officiate sports, and so definitely looking there. So as we were just mentioning, recreation is the highest demand. They hire the most in the, in the department for hiring, and they basically hire by cycles. We have three recreation cycles of when we do our programming, and that's the chunks that we keep hiring. Obviously, right now, we're hiring for late spring and summer programs, and so that's where we're at right now. So a little bit on recruiting strategies. I'm going to share what we're doing kind of long-term. One, of course, is always looking at competitive wage. It's an issue across the nation and our state. We did make a modification to our maintenance positions, so thank you, council, for doing that. We were able to bump that up during this immediate budget. Recreation has a much higher budget for temporary part-time staff, and so we are going to be exploring that and looking at that and coming back to you all for consideration in the 23, 24 budget, in case we need to move and once we kind of look at the market. We are working towards what can we incentivize? I don't know if you've seen what DIX is doing and Target and Amazon, but man, it is getting hard to compete, but we're in a government structure, so it's very difficult, and we have earned revenue and so on. So it's something that we're going to have to keep looking at. We are launching a Human Services Youth Employment Initiative this year with a lot of our community-based organizations about how to bring in youth and teach them to be job-ready, and then hopefully, we're going to get them right back, and we're going to put them right back into the system and trying to keep our own as we're growing. We do need to focus a little bit more on outreach and paid advertising. The city doesn't do a lot of paid advertising, like commercials, billboards, all that kind of stuff, so it's not something we have set in place, but we are exploring that for next year as we move forward. We are repurposing an all-year temp. I, I've come to council before about how busy and overloaded our park program coordinators are, because not only are we interviewing and onboarding and training, now we have to be recruiters, and it's very challenging, and so trying to fit this all in. So we're going to do some conversion of programs to actually have staff that that's what they do, is, is actually recruit and go to job fairs and all that kind of stuff. And then we're also trying to focus on value-based messaging. I mean, I'm, I'm biased, I get it, but I really believe that there's a true value in working with people in our community versus a fast food place or even a clothing store. And so like actually making a difference in little kids' lives or seniors or something like that, it's just more of a powerful heart thing. So we're going to really try and focus a lot of our messaging around value-based on what we actually deliver and hopefully sway a little bit more that way. And then obviously, we need to take care of our current players. If we can get returnees back over and over and what their experience is when they are here working in Kent Parks, that's our goal, is to retain. A lot of college students come back to us year after year and so on, and so how do we keep those? It's also really important to understand, we hire our career staff from a lot of our temp pools, and so this is a real career opportunity to get your hand, you know, your foot in the door there, and we know you from the work experience and part-time, so it's a real career move for a lot of people as well. Short-term, we couldn't do much because it was so fast of a turnaround, but what we're trying to do right now is just blanket the city as best we can, so they know that we are hiring and what can they do. And so I highlighted a lot of stuff here, and we'll go overall, we'll go really quick. You know, one of the things we're trying to do is how to make it easy for people to come in and see us. So the recreation team's been really creative. They're actually doing walk-in interviews, so you'll see this, anybody in the audience, if you want to come out, you just come to the Kent Commons interview on-site, right there. And so if we can get people to do that, that way they aren't sitting and going through this whole process and so on. We, I don't know if you've seen them, but over roadway banners are up that we're recruiting, so happy for that. I know people are going to get sick at Kent Parks, but that's the best we can do. We are putting magnets on all of our vehicles, so when we're driving around, they're basically driving billboards that we're hiring. We are recruiting actively in Kent School District. We go through their Peach Jar system. Councilmember Michelle gave me an idea of stealing other school districts, so we're going to be doing that. So we're going to be looking at some of the other school districts and see if we can bring them in and, and come into Kent. We, of course, in our recreation guide, we're on all the reader boards, all of our newsletters, all of social media is there. We also have a direct participant email list. We send that out to all those parents and families. Direct contacts to past employees, school contacts, coaches, teachers, principals, you name it, we're talking to them. We have a focused website that has exactly what is all available in pop-up messaging, seasonal brochures, recruiting by mail. We're actually going into the Value Pack coupon mailer in the fall. We're actually going into the Value Pack coupon mailer in the fall. We are working with spreading the word in all of our community-based organizations. We're putting signage on fences, you might have seen them. We also are doing yard signage, you know, the push-in-the-grass type of signage to spread the word. Staffing at job fairs, city commissions and so on. We did present to our Park and Rec Commission similar information. They gave us even additional information to consider, looking at unemployment offices, labor-ready areas, goodwill, consideration of reentry programs if they're positions that don't require certain background checks. Digital badges, which are new for the younger generations, are basically saying we would guarantee a letter of recommendation if you have a successful, so young adults can start building resumes. So we're trying to figure out all these kind of cool things. So what this means is if we can't find what we need, because in our area, we work with kids and we work with vulnerable adults or things like that, we have to have minimum staffing in order to run safety in our programs and so on. So in recreation, we have, programs are at risk if we cannot fill them. What that means is we would, our goal is to first scale. So if a program, say, had an opportunity for 100 people to participate, we might go down to 50 before we officially cancel and so on. Others, we might not have that luck. Lifeguards is one of them. We're about 50% staffed on our camps and playground programs, so anybody that's interested in there, we still need office assistants and some other help at some of our commons and other areas. Sports officiating, we're looking okay. Lifeguards in the recreation division is by far one of our most challenging areas. We did get three applicants after several months of advertising, and they're not certified or qualified in any way, even if we wanted to. We need a minimum of 16, the goal would be 20. We're still going to try, but we're going to have to call that at some point, probably in middle April, because if we weren't, we would have to certify and then train, and we're going to run out of time. So we're not calling it yet, but it's not looking good, so I just wanted to warn everybody. I've already warned the commission. If programs are canceled because of staffing and parents have already enrolled families and kids and so on, it's obviously fully refunded, and we work through that first, and we'll work through a process of refunding the money. It's heartbreaking, a lot of parents rely on us for daycare and child coverage over the summer and keeping their kids active, so, you know, I just implore, if you all know anybody, please send them our way. We will definitely look and work them. And then park maintenance and operations, they are still about 40% short on their staffing right now. We already know we have to delay our, we shift to a peak season-type maintenance. We are going to have to delay reopening of restrooms. We're going to have to hold back on some of our frequencies until we have full staff, so really asking for tolerance and grace from the community and from our, our partners out there until we can get fully staffed on there and going from there. So just, that's all I had. I just, you know, happy to answer any questions. I wish I could keep the positivity moving, and we're doing everything we can. I just didn't want council or even our community to know. We're trying every possible thing we can to get employee, employee applicants in, so happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Julie. Any, Council President Boyce, followed by Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say your color scheme is really neat. I mean, you drive around the city and you see it's everywhere, so I like the color scheme. And I'm not sure what else you can do for advertisement-wise, because wherever you go and drive around, it's pretty clear. So I hope that, you know, we are able to get some of our young adults apply and be part of it. So just, I want to say kudos for setting up the infrastructure so people can apply, but I'm not sure what else you can do. So thanks for putting in the effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just love it whenever you come. You always have great information to share. I was wondering-
Great information.
To be able to see all of the different things that we do. Yeah, we need the employees, but you see the people, and they're getting good wages, they're going to have a good, they're going to have a good job path. My son's first job at 14 was one of the umpires with Kent Parks.
My son's first job was Kent Parks, too?
I bet a lot of our employees have worked for Kent Parks. But what I was wondering, are we also advertising in other languages? Not that, I'm guessing the people have to speak English, but I'm thinking about grandma who sees it and hasn't, who doesn't speak English, but can tell the grandson or granddaughter, hey, this job is open, go check it out, because they know that they're in that field. So is this, a lot of our things are being translated, is this also the job-
No, we haven't really dove into that too much. We don't have the ability in the HR system to convert all of our job postings and so on. We could potentially test a few. I think we're relying a lot on our community-based organizations to try and convert or promote that, but it might be worth testing out. In our area, you know, English is the community common language, so we have to be able to have it speaking, but I definitely think we should look at it if it helps, for sure.
And I, I understand the speaking. I was just thinking so that they can, the word may spread about the jobs that way.
Okay, Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the information, Julie, and my son, too. His first job was Kent Parks. It's really a great opportunity for those younger people to have a good job. We need everyone in the community to tell everyone. Every day, I'm asking my son, do any of your friends need a job? Are you sure? Can you ask them? So please, please reach out to anyone you know, because these are really important positions that we need filled. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it. We just really wanted to make sure that council and the community were aware of all of the things that we're doing for recruitment and that we are in a place where it really is going to make a difference in our summer programming. And just to, to add on, so if you look around the city of Kent now, not only in our parks department do we have employees that started out as, as summer, summer hires, but I'm all the way in law, we've got one of our attorneys started out as like a referee or working in the parks. You never know. It's a great way to launch an entire career, so-
They should call those back. No.
She's not busy on the other, yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next item on our agenda is reports from council and staff, so an opportunity to hear from everyone sitting up here on the work that they are doing outside of council meetings and committee meetings. Very, very grateful that we've got an extremely involved council in regional issues. So Kent is a part of a very large region, and if we are not at the tables having those conversations, then our voice isn't being heard, and we miss out on opportunities for funding and decision-making in things that impact us here at the city. So I will start off, couple of reports on some, some fun things that I was able to do last week as we're opening back up and people are gathering together. I got to visit my first classroom in a couple of years, so I want to give a shout out to Ms. Maxwell's second-grade classroom at Panther Lake Elementary. They have been doing a project studying the city of Kent and then advertising. So about employment opportunities, some of them did reports on Blue Origin, about restaurants and why you would come to Kent, and their favorite restaurants here in the city of Kent, and they made advertising brochures. So I got a chance to go and sit with the classroom, look at their amazing brochures, talk to them about why they love Kent and why they want other people to love the city of Kent. So just want to say thank you to Ms. Maxwell's second graders at, at Panther Lake. It was a really great way to get back into the classroom and, and see those smiling faces. Also want to give a shout out to our women's football team, the Seattle Majestic. Their home field is French Field. They had a game on Saturday, and I had a chance to go by and do the coin toss and watch them play. It's pretty incredible, the very hard-hitting team, great game, and I would encourage, encourage you all to check it out. It's a fabulous way to spend a weekend evening watching some good football. Two of my regional reports highlights, little bit about Transportation Policy Board. I, I chair that, that regional board, and we are still working through our regional transportation plan. We received well over 500 comments when it went out for input, and so the board is working through those comments. We have an extended meeting coming up on April 14th, looking at amendments and everything from specific project list to race and equity lens in implementation of transportation projects, climate, and a variety of other details in that plan. So hopefully, when I come back to you in May, we will have a recommendation to the regional Flood Control Advisory Board, so this is a group of local electeds that have interest in flood control in King County, and we make a recommendation to the Flood Control Board, AKA the King County Council, wearing a different hat, on how funding, flood control funding is spent. Kent has been a significant recipient of that money over the years. Think about all of our levy projects on the Green River, where we've also been able to implement habitat projects, recreation, that kind of thing. So we had our first meeting, some level-setting on what the budget looks like, and at that meeting, I was elected chair of that board. So we'll continue to report out again as Kent, those flood control dollars are extremely important to the health and vitality of our downtown and valley. With that, I am going to look to my right to our interim chief administrative officer, Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four quick issues. First off, this week on Thursday, we're going to have our ELT retreat. We're going to be discussing, the main item for discussion will be the budget as we get geared up to prepare for our next biennial budget. The other couple of issues, we have signed, or the mayor has signed, the recruitment contract for the CAO job, so that should get underway very, very soon, and that should be moving forward fairly, fairly quickly. Couple other things, we have a closed session tonight. This is not an executive session, but a closed session to talk about labor agreements, and we will have action after the closed session. We anticipate that'll take about 10 minutes. And then finally, the CAO report is in the agenda packet, and that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Pat. Council President Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For, I, we had, we had a meeting today early on. It was, it was around this operation committee here, public safety operation. A couple of things on agenda, and we talked about some ordinance amendment around cars, junk cars that you may see on the street for quite some time. We modify our ordinance to be able to move those cars, if they've been sitting there for quite some time. And also for our sub-police station up on the east side of 256 up there in Kent by Target, we have a substation there, so we extend the lease there for another three to five years, so they can continue to be there, provide service to our community. We also had a legislative report, you know, the legislative session is over, but we got a report from Brianna Murray, who is our representative, and I think the city of Kent came up pretty well, you know, for its dollar-wise. We had $10 million on Meet Me on Meekers, which is our gateway to Kent, so we will continue to improve that. And also, we got like $20.6 million for the completion of 224th Street. And there was all the good things that were asked. I think overall, the city of Kent made up pretty well for the funding perspective coming out this legislative session. At our workshop, we had a great presentation by Lehi, Jason Castle, and the team, whether they're still in the audience, really educate the council. I would say I learned something myself as well, just around, which stands for Local Income Housing Institute, which talks about tiny houses. So they presented the council for possible tiny houses at St. James Episcopal Church up on the hill up here, so great presentation, lots of questions from the, from the council, but I do want to thank them for educating us, I think we all walked away learning something that we probably didn't know prior to the presentation. For me myself, I sit on the, as the chair of the Southern Cities Association, which we call PIC Committee, and which consists of 38 cities where we kind of get together and, and try to put policy in place to benefit the city. You know, sometimes Seattle is the big city, but you know, by you get 38 cities together, I think our population is about 1.7 million plus versus Seattle, so we'll definitely have a seat at the table. Our next meeting is going to be on, on next Wednesday. Something we could be talking about in that meeting. We continue to talk about the housing countywide policy. I think you part of it, right, that countywide policy? Nope?
Anyway, pardon me for a minute.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, so we're going to have a conversation on that. We also will be talking about what's going on in the local area around climate change. I think there was a possibility earlier from King County, possibly thinking about putting something on the ballot, but I'm not sure that it's going to happen now for its climate change, but I think it's still on the table. But we'll talk about what we do at a local level. Everybody have a chance to kind of share what's going on at the local level. And also, there'll be solid waste and sewer rate, you know, I think they put a hold of that during COVID, so that's back at, on the table where you have some discussion around that. So, that's all I have, but our council member, they sit on some regional table that represent the city, and I'll just start to my left, and go with Councilmember Michelle, or you can share what's going on with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I serve on Kent's Human Services Commission, and we are still preparing for the grant application process, review process. So I do want to let everyone know that this, this time around, there's increased technical support for the grant process and that staff, Kent staff has actually set a time, set aside time to work with individuals if they do need help with their grant. The commission also heard from three different organizations related to education. We heard from Katie Hall Foundation, which works with women and girls on leadership and jobs, and they have a Girls on the Rise eight-week course. And then also, Your Money Matters, it's a mentorship on financial education, practical application and education support. And then the last organization we heard from was Community Network Council, and they improve education outcomes for Black and Brown students, including home visits to work with parents. And then we also got an update from Ty Whitfield from Kingdom Gathering Outreach and Kendrick Glover from Gem Empowerment and Mentoring about the community listening session that was held. And also, the mayor attended that meeting. I also serve on the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, and we had another update on sequential intercept model, which is for the judicial system. It's an integrated system for better info-sharing between jurisdictions. It's an ongoing discussion on how best to go about that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cora.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on K4C, which is consisting of King County Cities for Climate Change, and we had our meeting on March 18. That was a while ago. We talked about some of the wins we had in the legislation, legislation as it was over. We talked about move forward, Forward Washington Transportation Package, 16 billion package that passed. There were some wins for climate, including clean building performance standards, appliance standards, electric vehicle charging on multifamily communities, greenhouse gas design in public facilities, and energy facility siting. We have another meeting this Friday at 10:00 AM. I also sit on Association of Washington Cities Nominating Committee, will be meeting on the 21st at 10:00 AM. I serve on Growth Management Planning Council, we're also meeting at the end of April. I serve as the chair for the Caucus for Growth Management Planning Council. Domestic Violence Regional Task Force will be meeting in May. If you just unplane your agents, the council will be meeting in-
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Lomber.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the King County Department Housing Committee and also the Community Security Council for King County. Both my committees are meeting at the same time on Friday, coming Friday, so I'm going to be doing some juggling, and I will have a report on that. But I did also went to share a great event I got to attend this weekend, and I think a few of you attended the day before, but the reopening of the Kent Historic Museum. If you haven't been out there, go see it. There's new, new refresh displays, new paint, everything was just in fabulous condition. They have great self-guided tour and placards that has a lot more information. It was just really fascinating. They've added a Native American and Japanese-American displays up in the upper bedroom. It was just a really great, really great experience, and I encourage the community to get out and visit that again.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lomber. Councilwoman Trautler.
Thank you, Council President Boyce. I am chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee for the city of Kent, and we are not going to be meeting in April, but we will be meeting in May. I also am vice-chair of the Regional Transit Committee, along with King County Councilmember Dave Upthegrove, who chairs that committee. On, excuse me, on March 16th, I had the opportunity to actually chair that because he had something else that came up. So one of the highlights from that meeting was a presentation on SAFE, which is the Safety, Security and Fair Enforcement Reform. And Dow Constantine introduced this initiative to the King County Council back in February, and the idea is to improve safety for customers and drivers. And if you recall back when COVID first hit, fares for transit were suspended. And now we've created this problem where some of the customers do not want to get off the bus when the bus comes to the end of the route. So that is something that they are dealing with and working through. They are asking the people to exit the bus, then they are contacting Metro Transit at the control center, and then if needed, they bring in transit police or the- the control center, and then if needed, they bring in transit police or the police department. But ultimately, they want to be able to provide support and services for some of these people that really need it. Just keep in mind that buses are safe, and as gas prices go up, please consider taking transit as an alternative ticket to where you need to. And then lastly, I am on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board with Council President Weiss and Councilmember Thomas, and we will be meeting on the 20th of April. That ends my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Troutner. Councilwoman Hester.
Thank you, Council President. Public Works Committee, I chair the Public Works Committee. We had two items on our agenda. One was a report or an update on the 6,001, 6,000 gallon, 6,001 gallon tanker, number one. We have two 6,000 gallon tanks, and these are our water reservoirs up on East Hill. And what they're doing is completely redoing or resurfacing the inside. So that means they had to empty it. They're going to be doing repainting it, and it's not just regular paint like you would use. It's really an interesting process. So they use a special type of paint. They are also going to be doing new wells on it, on all of the, all of the steel that's in there, and making the needed updates. That was, I believe, built in 1967, definitely in the 60s, so it has been around a while. We also saw a rendering of the West Hill Reservoir, the painting design that's going to be on the West Hill Reservoir, the new mural, that was also shown to the neighborhood group, as well as the Arts Commission, and received very good comments, very positive comments from that. Arts Commission, I'm layers on there. The Inspired by Greatness exhibit is in the judging stage right now. The new exhibit, the new competition is Here Comes the Sun. So if you feel inspired by the sun, do something artistic with that, dance, poetry, crochet, painting, and get that on the Kent Creates website. You have until June 30th for that exhibit to run. The artist, the call for artists is still out. That's for the nine traffic boxes. You've seen the different designs on the traffic boxes, the wraps. Well, if you're an artist and you have an idea for how to make those beautiful, then you can submit that, and you have until April 18th. And we just wrapped up the kids' summer art exhibit, the Kent Student Art Walk, actually, and we had over 400 students participate in that, and over 15 businesses throughout Kent Downtown, Kent Station, the Centennial Center, that was, their art was exhibited there. Kent Conservation District, I chair, will meet on Tuesday, the 12th, so next time for that. And MID, Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council. We had a report on the underspend, so there were, because of the pandemic, there were programs that did not spend all of their grant money. And so we are looking at how to repurpose that money, where to put it as far as different programs that could be backfilled, programs that have come forth that would like more funding. So we're looking at the underspend recommendations, and also the same thing for the designated fund. We've come up with about $4 million worth, and it will probably top out at about six, just over six by the time we're done. There'll be more recommendations coming at the meeting on the fourth Thursday of this month. Final, the presentation, we always have a presentation, was by the Somali Health Board, National Health Program, and they focus on the Somali community, which is a good help because a number of their community members naturally would feel more comfortable speaking in their native language. With that, they are able to receive services, and that includes the elders, it includes the students. They have a good number of student programs, but they have, a lot of those are, again, are in-language programs, and so they are able to help. These are just a wide variety of programs. I don't even know how to help children that help with housing, help with food, who needs security. So they do, why do you think these Somali community, that's it?
Are you sure? Excellent report, Councilwoman Troutner. Thank you so much. You do a thorough job of reporting, though. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, the interim president.
All right. Thank you, Council President. With that, we will move on on our agenda. Item number six is a public hearing. We do not have one this evening, so that brings us into public comment. Want to just remind everyone, public comment period is your opportunity to speak to the council or mayor on issues that relate to the business of the city of Kent or to an agenda item the council will consider at this meeting. Comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, reminder that the state of Washington prohibits people from using public comment to support or oppose a ballot measure or a candidate for office. Kim, our clerk, will call your name in order that folks are signed up. If you want to speak and have not signed up, there still is an opportunity to sign up on the sheet up here. We allow limit comments to three minutes. There will be a timer on the screen, so you have an idea of when your time is heading to an end, and when you come up to the podium, if you could state your name and city of residence for the record. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim to call her.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just so you know, we have around 25 people signed up to speak. Most of them are on the same topic. I'm going to take a couple out of order. We have two civic students here, so I wanted to let them come up first. So we've got Kyra Griffin and Shai Singh, and you can come up.
Are we doing it together or separately?
You can do it separately or together. It's whatever you like.
Why is it not?
Give us your comment.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. My name is Shai Singh. I've been living in Kent all of my life, and I'm a civic student. I go to Kentwood High School and I'm a senior year. I would like to address the proclamation of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, specifically in regards to the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. I would like to say that I personally had not known of KSARX's existence until it was mentioned during the meeting, and I would just like to say thank you for sharing that resource with me. I will definitely continue to share the existence of KSARX with my peers so that we may all effectively utilize our community's resources and continue to be loud. Thank you.
Go Kunk! Yeah.
All right.
Hi, my name is Kyra Griffin. Wait, I wrote. I'm going to read it. Good evening, Mayor Ralph and council. I live in Kent, but my name is Kyra Griffin. I am currently a senior at Kentwood High School, and I'm 17 years old. I'm here for a civic engagement project given to me this year. It was interesting, it was interesting to experience this opportunity in here, but the many things that were discussed today. I did want to say to Mayor Ralph, and what you said, he mentioned this earlier, about the proclamation regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Month really resonated with me. It's not easy going through rape or sexual assault, and having that support is really important. There's a lot of mental damage, and having that support means so much, and I'm really interested to see how this will be implemented and what it looks like for the future. Hearing about KSARX is really helpful, as well, I will be surely being checking that out after I leave here today. And lastly, I hope that one day, when I'm ready, I'm able to support other victims and make a change. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is going to testify or give public comment remotely, and that's Ankeeta. If you can unmute your microphone and go ahead and present.
All right. Before our next speaker starts, I just want to say thank you to our students for coming tonight. I know it's part of your civics class, but it's so important that you figure out ways to be involved in your government, and I also want to say thank you very much for speaking to that proclamation. It's so important, and I am grateful that you will take that message and spread it back to your classmates, so thank you.
And also, we're hiring.
All right. Okay.
So Ankeeta, you are up.
This is Ankeeta, and I have my husband here, Rohan. He's up here.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, respected council members and honorable mayor. My name is Rohan. I'm a U.S. Army active-duty veteran, currently living in the housing complex, Binden West, which is right in front of the church where the tiny village, with the presentation we saw at 5:00, will be located. Since hearing about this news regarding the tiny home village, I've not been able to properly sleep, as I very well know what impact this tiny home village brings to the neighborhood. Before the pandemic, due to my previous job, where I worked as a community outreach recruiter, which gave entry-level jobs to warehouse workers, I also have experience working with various local organizations like United Way. I had the opportunity to visit one of the tiny homes villages in Georgetown. What I saw there during my five-hour-plus stay is unsanitary conditions, trash everywhere, smell of marijuana, drug addicts, and residents who had zero interest in any kind of job offered. As mentioned in the presentation at 5:00, they have background checks, but one quick Google search will quickly show you the real picture of this tiny villages, which is far from what was shown on PowerPoint presentation by LIHI, and how it destroyed the peace and the lives of the nearby residents. Even 40 days back, there was a drug overdose death in a tiny house village in Georgetown. So I beg you to reconsider and not make the same mistake made by other cities, and not approve the lives of hundreds of hard-working and tax-paying Kansas residents in order to give homes to 35 people.
And I also want to add that if you actually drive by 94th Avenue, you can actually see the part of Tiny House Village because the part of parking lot is visible from the main road, and during the presentation, they said it cannot be visible from the main road. And our kids play, and our old parents walk in these neighborhoods, and this will make it highly unsafe for us. We have heard from the police department earlier today, there have been high number of complaints of disturbance and assault, et cetera. So that's a lot of nuisance for immediate neighbors like us. So why not avoid these possible situations, might be more proactive rather than reactive. Lehigh said that there are case managers that try to take care of this, but they're on the selling side. They will say all that, but it only goes downhill from there. So this is not the right location for this village, right in the middle of residential area. We have hundreds of houses here, and maybe this needs to be built in the outskirts of the city where the neighborhoods around will not be impacted. We have enough crime around us already, and some homeless people walking from the church trying to break into our houses for theft, et cetera. Issues that come with tiny house villages right in our neighborhood probably will push us look for housing somewhere else in this hot market where no place is affordable anywhere. So I really beg you to reconsider this and reject the proposal. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Mayor, that I did receive some written public comments that I provided to all the council.
When we're done with the in-person public comment, I will request a motion to enter those into the record.
Thank you. The next speaker is Martin Pizkewitz. Okay, thank you.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Mark Pizkiewicz. I'm here to speak in support of Lehigh's Tiny House Village. I own and live in a house on 94th, down the street from the proposed Tiny House Village location. I work here in Kent, at Blue Origin, and hope to raise my kids one day in Kent as well. I want to express my enthusiasm about the Tiny House Village on 94th Streets. I'm excited about the Tiny House Village being able to provide temporary shelter and case management in order to get refugees, single mothers, and those who have aged out of the foster program on a path to permanent housing. Lehigh villages have the highest success rates of getting folks into permanent housing and a direct pipeline of over 3,000 units around Washington. They're getting folks off the streets, and as we heard previously, provide a net for people that might have just fallen into bad times and just need that little bit of help. I just wanted to say, please support this Tiny House Village, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is the Reverend Dr. Joyce Perry Moore.
Good evening, again. President Weiss, Mayor Ralph, esteemed council members. I rise tonight to reiterate my support and enthusiasm for Lehigh's proposed Tiny House Village to be on the campus of the church where I am rector. I am a homeowner in Kent, one of your constituents. I was actually born on a farm not too far from Reber Ranch. I've traveled all around the country and have worked in many places, from Boston to California to Alaska, and have seen the problem of homelessness increase in our country. Coming home now to Kent, I'm encouraged by the great diversity here, by the way that we welcome people who are immigrants and refugees trying to make a better life. I am also, as a nonprofit administrator, which is what I do as a priest and rector, I am also concerned about those who are out on the streets and that the police do not have the time to, and the resources, to guide them to what they need in order to live a better life. In that way, I'm excited about the presence of the Lehigh Village, which will be a safe place. In fact, I think that's what we should name it, Safe Space Village, because the residents there, which have been mentioned, single moms, families, refugees, intermediate-age youth that have aged out of foster care, that they can make a safe space for themselves. And then, so doing the security that's there 24/7. Although I work late hours, I'm not there 24 hours a day. It means there'll be professional people on the campus and in our neighborhood looking out for that community to ensure a safe space. And case managers that are connected, as our case managers are, to the many, many wonderful resources that we have here in this great city. So finally, I just want to again encourage you to please do what you can to amend regulations so that we can implement a working, effective program to increase our public safety and to connect our neighbors in need to the resources that are available. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sue Young Yun, followed by Michael Javelli.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Honorable Board, and community members. My name is Sue Young Yun, and I am the Civic Engagement Program Manager at Utopia Washington, headquartered on Central Avenue. I am a lifelong resident of Kent, living here over 30 years. I currently live down the street at Kent Station. I love my city, and we have a regional affordable housing crisis here. Unlivable wages make it difficult for Kent residents to afford the $1,700 to $1,800 median rent. We are seeing too many Kent residents become unhoused, and we don't have enough options for them. I support a tiny house village for Kent families, refugees, single mothers, and others. Trans people of color face some of the highest housing rates of any population. We should support our disenfranchised neighbors to get case management and on a path to permanent housing. Low-income Housing Institute villages have the highest success rates at getting people into permanent housing with a direct pipeline to over 3,000 units of their own housing. By getting folks off the street in my neighborhood and the services they need to get into housing, this will increase the safety of the entire community. Council members, please support this Tiny House Village. Will Kent demonize or uplift our housing community? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Javelli, followed by Peter Ostrander.
Hello again. Mayor, council? I'd just like to kind of, well, to be honest, I thought I would be speaking a bit later in the list, but I feel like we're going to hear a lot of good arguments morally for why we should have the tiny housing village. And instead of echoing those arguments, I'd rather look at it from a slightly different perspective, and that is the perspective of what I like to call the constitutional imperative for us, being citizens, to fix homelessness. Homelessness is a problem that not only affects people, it affects citizens, citizens who the government serves. And not only is it citizens, it's some of the most vulnerable citizens. And I've heard a lot of counterarguments, just, there seems to be this like culture of like, almost like disdain for homelessness, but not really any like sympathy for people who actually are experiencing it. So I'd just like to point out that not only are homeless people citizens, but also at the meeting, which by the way, thank you so much, council, for listening to that workshop that we had for an hour and a half. You were diligently taking notes, asking questions, and seeing that level of and seeing that level of just engagement is really inspiring, especially when I've seen so many other city councils not do remotely the same thing. But regardless, Chief Padilla said that the crime, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Padilla, but the crime rate would not see a high raise from this village, from what he's seeing from the data, from the other villages around this area. He said it would be, quote, I think, low to moderate. Is that correct? Cool, okay. So, and I've heard a lot of people ask this question is, well, why are we dealing with this problem? Why is Kent dealing with the problem of people who come from all over? And to be honest, I think the answer to that question is irrelevant. It is our problem. These people are here, and we need to do something about it. And it seems that there are a lot of people in this country that care about your right to life up until the point where you're born. And here we think a little bit differently. Here we think that we care about everyone's right to life even after they're born, and they're right once they are living. And we know that people make mistakes. So I'd just like to say that I'm in support of this tiny housing community, and I urge you all to be as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peter Ostrander, followed by Annie Otupu Vienna.
Mayor Ralph and Council President and Council members. I figured out how to do it right this time. I appreciate everyone. My name is Peter Ostrander. I currently reside in Auburn. However, I lived in Kent for all of my children's lives up until this point. They graduated from Kent Ridge, and I am currently the Minister of Community Engagement at St. James Episcopal Church. I am truly in support of this endeavor that we are hoping to embark upon. A person mentioned earlier that there are hundreds of homes that surround us. There are also hundreds and hundreds of apartments that surround us also. And a lot of the clients that we receive that come through our office are people that reside in those apartments. And those people in those apartments are living paycheck to paycheck. And they are trying to do their best to take care of their kids, to take care of their grandkids, to supplement as best as they're able from all of wonderful agencies that are in our Kent community to get them to the next place, to get them through the next month. We provide food for them and a little bit with our direct services, utility help and rent. We know with the pandemic, it just made a mess of all of that kind of stuff. So we have a complex situation where St. James with Lehigh and Kingdom Gatherers can be a part of making sure that there's a safety net for these individuals. When they come to a point and they are facing eviction, that they have a place to go. And they have a place to feel safe where they don't have to struggle so hard with trying to make and figure it all out and figure out how to pay their next bills. They can reside in our place, and they can have case management, and they can rest, and they can take a breath, and they can be supportive with all the different issues and supportive services that we have to empower them to not fall further, to get what they need to move forward, to find the supportive needs of housing, the supportive challenges of income that will sustain them moving into the future. And I think this provides us a really wonderful opportunity, our little part that we do behind us, to move us further in that goal of providing for our neighbors. And I noticed your thing up there about the City of Kent goals. I was going to use that as my platform for my talk because I think every single one of those things that is your goal, you could fit in the tiny homes and what we're doing. It fits so succinctly, and I could have spoken to all of that, but it's all passed me. So I am supportive of this. Thank you so much for listening to us earlier. Good night.
Speaker is Annie Otupu Vienna, followed by Cliff Cuthon.
All right, and if I could get those, so go ahead and join us at the podium. If I could get the speaker that's next in line to come up and join us along the wall so that way we can move through. And also ask if you could hold your applause just because we've got close to twenty speakers left. And so for Kim to be able to call the next folks up, it's easier to move through the process. So name and city of residence for the record.
Talalava, my name is Annie Otupu Vienna, and I live and work here in Kent. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm the Deputy Director for Utopia Washington. And as someone who does community work and has supported houseless folks in informal and formal ways, we know that this work doesn't end at five, right? And communities need to be served, whether they're dealing with psychosis, right? Whether they're in need of safety because they're being booted out of a shelter because they're trans. And I've supported folks where I've seen them, I've seen trans women where they're live on the streets and in campuses than be in a shelter because it's unsafe, because they're being misgendered. Also, we know that when a pandemic happens and the world is in survival mode, the folks who are most impacted are the most marginalized folks, right? Houseless folks. And the conditions of this pandemic isn't new to black and brown folks, to houseless folks, to trans folks, but it's accelerated those conditions for them. And, sorry, man, it's just weird. And so what we're asking is, what I heard from, earlier from a comment was basically someone saying that us deciding who's worthy of being housed, who's worthy of receiving services, and who's worthy of being addressed as a human in the city. And I think we need to remember that houseless folks are also our community members, right? And a thread that was presented earlier was around climate change. These are folks who are impacted by the climate crisis, right? And impacted by folks being displaced from Seattle. We know that this city is in the top three, Kent, Fetterway, and Renton are in the top three most diverse cities in the country because folks are being pushed further south and when there aren't any other options for them to find housing. So I am in full support of this Tiny House Village. I think we need to remember the human aspect, right? And dig deep into providing, being there for folks. And remember, these people are, aren't just, you know, they're family, and they are a part of this community, just as all you are. Thank you.
Cuthon, followed by David Stotzing.
Cuthon, you can just kind of easy up on that, but it's okay. Anyway, hello, neighbors. My name is Cliff Cuthon. I'm a homeowner in Kent's East Hill neighborhood. So I work for Sideline Institute as Coalition Strategy Manager. So I was in Olympia this last legislative session. We have a deep, deep, deep housing crisis across the state, and I'm sure that's not a surprise to anyone. Tonight, I'm here just as a Kent resident, as a neighbor, to strongly support the creation of a tiny home village here in our city. These tiny homes are an important housing option. They are an effective way to address the needs for people here in our community. The city should move quickly to permit the construction of these homes. I've, in previous occupations, I've reported on tiny home villages for local newspapers. During my city council run last year, I toured a tiny home along with Councilmember Brenda Fincher and other community leaders. And I've also visited a number of them throughout the region. I saw people, families, neighbors, who needed these homes, who were able to get up on their feet. And they provide an essential link for those who need long-term housing solutions that do not yet exist. Last, this past session as well, I believe the speaker ahead of me mentioned, or before me, mentioned how diverse our communities were. Our communities are also at some of the communities that are most predisposed to face displacement in South King County and in Rainier Valley and South King County region. And this last legislative session, the City of Kent and other cities argue that statewide actions on middle housing and ADUs weren't necessary. And instead, that local governments have this, so local governments are taking leadership. So I'm going to invite the City of Kent. I want to invite the city to prove themselves in other cities that said that they'll need the state to come in and impose solutions. I want to invite the City of Kent to prove yourselves right on that by supporting these tiny homes, by providing an option, a solution, and a way forward for people. Because I think this was mentioned a couple of times, but these are our most vulnerable citizens out here. This is a chance for the City of Kent to step up and to show leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Stotzing, followed by Margaret Luke.
Good evening, and thank you, council members, President Boyce, Mayor Ralph, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is David Stotzing. I'm a proud resident, homeowner, and live less than five minutes away from St. James and the proposed site of the Tiny House Village. With our regional affordable housing crisis, we are seeing too many Kent residents becoming unhoused, and we just do not have enough options for them. And in following the news, my heart has been broken by the plight facing refugees who are coming to our very region. As soon as I learned of this proposed Tiny House Village, I was overjoyed. It is rare that such a clear and meaningful opportunity to help those in need presents itself. My husband and I, as proud gay men, were excited to learn that not only will this village provide life-changing and life-affirming shelter for Kent families, our existing homeless population, refugees, and single mothers, but it will also embrace, rather than discriminate, against members of the LGBT community, a community that is often highly disproportionately affected by homelessness. Therefore, I am enthusiastically voicing support for a Tiny House Village in Kent. As a community, we have a tangible opportunity to help these people get case management and on a real path to permanent housing. Lehigh villages having the highest success at getting folks into permanent housing and into a direct pipeline to over three thousand units of their own affordable housing, the choice seems clear. By getting folks off the streets of our neighborhood and the services they need to get into housing, this village will increase the safety of our entire community. Council members and Mayor Ralph, I ask that you please support this Tiny House Village.
Thank you. The next speaker is Margaret Luke, followed by Brenda Farwell.
Hi, my name is Margaret Luke, and I live in Auburn. But I graduated, we moved here from Kansas when I was three. I attended Kent schools, graduated from Kent Ridge. My church is in Kent. I work at, well, volunteer at the Kent Monday Night Supper. I started volunteering at Vine Maple Place. I got connected with Peter through the Home Program, that houses or lets homeless men eat and sleep in our churches, which isn't necessary anymore because of, they found other options that are better for them, and we were excited about that. But our church is looking for new opportunities and ways to serve. The thing that is so good and positive and effective with Home, Vine Maple Place, this program is that it connects people to services and offers them opportunities by being backed by a program that they wouldn't even be entertained if they approached on their own. They need the backing. They need the hands up. But with the oversight of the program, they have a vested interest in abiding by the rules because if they don't, they're out. And that was the groundwork of the Home Program. That got a little laxer the longer the program was in place, and I think it affected the program. So as long as the, you know, the lines are drawn, the people, I think, will rise to the occasion. They want this opportunity. And you can always find an example of one that didn't work, but it does not rise to the impact of one that comes back and says, because of the program, I'm not in that place anymore. You know, lose your job, get divorced, get sick, and you can be in the position that some of these people find themselves in. It's not, you know, they just don't want to work. They just don't want to, you know. Some of them don't, and some of them, you know, when they're offered services, nope, don't want it. But that is not the majority.
Thank you.
So I and my church are behind this proposal and, you know, will walk beside them and do what we can to help it succeed. And we have some property, too, that if this is successful, you know, I can't, you know, I would have to take it. But it's a step, and we are interested.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Brenda Farwell, followed by Dave Wiklander.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Ralph, and Council President Bill Boyce. My name is Brenda Farwell, and I'm the past president of the Kent Community Foundation. I host the Kent Community Partner Meetings on Tuesday mornings. And we bring together nonprofit organizations, churches, service clubs, and the government to share ideas, resources, and find ways to collaborate and support our community. Many of the people on our meeting calls have toured the Skyway Tiny Villages. And personally, I was impressed with the layout, the services offered, and the community engagement and the buy-in by the community as a whole. There are King County funds available to get this started, a location being considered at St. James Episcopal Church. And we have many service organizations available to us in the City of Kent. Most importantly, we have an advocate. Ty Whitfield with Kingdom Gathering has been behind this, supported this, pushed this forward. And to have a program be successful in a community, having an advocate is a definite bonus. I hope, as a community, that we find a way to rally around this opportunity and to make this happen in our community. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dave Wiklander, followed by Rebecca Riddle.
Good evening. My name's Dave Wiklander. I live in Kent, right across the street from the church. Bought the house about ten months ago. I moved to that location because I was looking for a nice house and a safe, clean environment to live in. Fresh out of high school, I was in the Marine Corps for four years, and I've been working hard for thirty-six years since then. I didn't, not until I was fifty-eight years old, could I afford to find a nice house in a nice, clean neighborhood. And now this has come up. I've talked to most of my neighbors. There were very few flyers sent out, and most of them were terrified. There's Indian people next to me, Vietnamese, Filipino. It's a diverse neighborhood. Some of them don't understand what's going on, but everyone right around my house were absolutely terrified. So I've submitted a four-paragraph email to all of you. And so I'm not going to dive into all that information because you can read that later. But another issue I have is how this was all brought into our neighborhood. So within seven business days, we got a few flyers, very minimal, on a few doors. Four days later, there's a Zoom meeting sponsored by the church in Lehigh. Three days later, there's a council meeting to vote on this. We don't have enough time to have a community meeting, seek legal advice, absolutely do nothing. We have to try to rearrange our schedules to try to attend these meetings. And it doesn't give us, doesn't allow us any time to do anything. I mean, from my perception, that's somebody trying to steamroll something in with as little opposition as possible. I mean, that's how I I mean, that's how I would do it. So I highly disagree with that. And my fiancee, she can't sleep at night right now because she's so stressed out about this situation. And it's, it's nice that there's a lot of support and opinions for this type of thing, but those people aren't living in our neighborhood. It's not in their front yard. So it's easy to support things like this when it doesn't affect the living in your own home. And I don't disagree with helping the homeless, but again, I don't think it should be forced into a neighborhood like ours with no community vote or any, any way, any time or way for us to react to this. So like I said, I, I've submitted some other comments regarding the safety of the school children that get on and off the bus outside the church, and the homeless people living at the church tried to break into my house, and a few other things. So appreciate the time. Hand it off to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you. Before our next speaker comes up, I do want to clarify something. There has been some erroneous information put out that the council would be taking action tonight. That is absolutely not correct. Council has not made a decision on anything, and there is not going to be a vote this evening. So the workshop was simply for the council to gather additional information to make future decisions on whether they'll be taking this up or not. So just wanted to clarify that, as I have seen it now in several places, that the council would be voting tonight, and that is not an item that's on the agenda.
The next speaker is Rebecca Riddle, followed by Pastor Henry Jenkins.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Riffle. I am back up here to reiterate what more eloquent people than I have said tonight. I am firmly in support of the Tiny House Village. I do live on 94th, and it is in my neighborhood, and I have listened to all these, these facts. I've gone to the presentations. I am wildly impressed with how this is being handled. I don't have a lot of data to add that has not been stated tonight, but I, I wanted to add on a personal note that when I was 15, my family went through transitional homelessness. We experienced a homelessness that was permeated with privilege. We had a community that supported us, we had family that took us in. We were homeless for all of two weeks. It was very short, it was stressful, but it was filled with community support. And I want to be the kind of community that gives back that support to people who need it. So I hope that you'll consider supporting this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pastor Henry Jenkins, followed by Donald Richardson.
Good evening, everybody. I accepted Jesus Christ into my life in 1971, and the church I was in, we had about 16 speakers there. So when I accepted Christ into my life, my pastor told us, your ministry is not inside these four walls. Your ministry is out in the street where the sick and the hurting is. So I've been ministering to the homeless, clothing, feeding, over 40 years. Every piece of property God blessed us to purchase, we had four in Seattle. Every piece of property we own, we made room for the homeless people. Now, I come up in the era where you can go out and do a lot of good work and come to church and brag about it, because Jesus said, don't let your left hand do what your right hand do. So we work quietly, but I got people all across the country calling me, thanking, today thanking me for helping them go in the right way. As I closed, I said, Lord, give me a scripture for this meeting tonight. He gave me a scripture on St. Luke the 10th chapter, where Jesus said, a certain man went down from Jerusalem and fell among thieves. They beat him, they robbed him, and left him on the street bleeding. The priest came by, went over the other side of the street. The Levite looked on him, but the good Samaritan came to his rescue. And one of the reasons why I say that, because these people, they're homeless, but that's some other son and some other daughter out there. They just took a wrong turn in life, already needing eyes, somebody to show them some love. Jesus said, love your neighbor as you love yourself. My church, I've trained them, I've had great men leave, go out of my church and start great ministries, and because I would want to be that good Samaritan, come to the needle of people. Don't judge them. Hey, you, you can bring them in, they're going to make a mistake, but give them another chance. Somebody gave you another chance. So I believe in giving people another chance, showing love, and God has blessed me down through the years. As I leave, love your neighbor as you love yourself.
Thank you. Donald Richardson, followed by Patrick Moore.
Madam Mayor, Mr. President, council members, I'm Don Richardson. I'm a retired physician who just moved into Kent last May, but therefore have plenty of time to vote early and often and to organize. I also am rising in support of the Lehigh Tiny Village proposal, as I think we need to provide temporary housing for teenagers exiting the foster care system while they transition to independence, refugees, and single parents who have been unable to balance childcare income adequate to maintain housing during the pandemic. I understood, and I knew this was going to happen, that, that there are people very concerned about inhabitants with mental health or substance abuse problems and crime, dropping property values and so forth, but none of those groups are going to be represented in the, in the, in the tiny village that's proposed. So I don't think there really is room for the, the terror, and I hope people can go to sleep at night, especially since you guys are going to think about it for a long time. But I, I certainly hope that you do fix the regulations so that the, which, so we can allow the tiny village to be built.
Thank you. Patrick Moore, followed by Ty Whitfield.
Hello. I'd just like to start by saying that I'm inspired by being here. I haven't done this before, and I'm looking at our elected representatives of the city and hearing what you've done. And I know that you believe that when hope meets action, things get done. And I am in full support. I, I live in Kent, a homeowner. Just before the pandemic, I had been renting for several years before that, and I felt my dignity rise when I became a homeowner. Dignity. I've been a teacher since 1980, still teaching. I've taught everything from preschool through 12th grade. And I can tell you that as a public school teacher, students that come into the classroom, and by the way, I speak to you as a white, privileged male. I know what my privilege is, and I want to speak out for those who don't have that privilege. I want to speak out for them. And I want to let you know that I am in full support of the Tiny House Village. I had a lot of questions when I first heard about it. I welcome the conversation with people who are terrified. As long as the conversation is based on the ability to change one's mind, to go in with assumptions, to go in with false information, to go in with just terror, will not help us get anything done. I, I am moved by what's going on in the world today and to find people who, fathers and, and brothers and, and wives that will go out and fight for what they believe is We need to be willing to do that, too. And the word homeless, just think about it. We use, we throw it around all the time, homeless. Let's just call them people without homes, because people without homes are not less. They are not less. I have taught classrooms where there were privileged children that were abused, who had parents who were, who were into drugs, who, you know, those kinds of things, they don't know any economic boundaries. It's easy to stereotype people, to get a picture in your mind that is full of fear. But what about a picture in your mind that's full of hope? What about hope and action? Look towards you, all of you, to help us. When we do this, yay, it takes two hands. And please, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ty Whitfield, followed by Sean Kloss.
Just as a reminder, if you could state your name and city of residence for the record, thank you.
I Whitfield, Kent resident and Kent do work and Kent advocate. So I know you guys have been hearing and seeing my face, and I know you guys are getting, going to get tired, but keep on, because you're going to see me all the time. I am a fighter for not just the demographics that we're talking about here, but the homeless that's out on the streets, that the drugs, the mental abuse, the severe alcoholics, just, I, I feed them all. I, I'm out there on the streets, I'm on the ground level. I'm working, I'm, I'm feeding. I just gave a card to one of my homeless last week. You know, we have styles of homeless, and I think what happens is when you say homeless, everybody gets scared, because they put everybody in one place. But at the end of the day, you got all kinds of homeless. You got upper-class homeless that used to be, upper-class that used to be upper-class, but now they're homeless because they lost their business. We have middle-class homeless. We have low-income, has went from low-income to now they're homeless. We have homeless that right now is still on the streets, that I feed close to 110 in Kent every week, that's now scattered, and they show me where all their hiding places are. At the end of the day, we have a problem, and just because you turn your back, it does not stop the problem. You cannot stop a problem because you turn your back. We have to do something about it, and I always thought, maybe I'm a little different, that I, our hierarchy makes sure that the under, the underport, makes sure that we come together. So I look at my hierarchy to say, tell me what you doing. And if you don't have the, the solution, we got the solution, and we'll help you do what you need to do. So when I say we have to come together as a community and as a city, if, if our hierarchy doesn't have the solution, or us as a community have the solution, then let's do our work. If people out there is scared, and they're scared because they don't have the right facts, then we are available to be able to have these meetings, because we don't want you to be scared, because at the end of the day, whether we like it or not, Kent is growing. We are the largest city in Washington State and part of the nation. We have grown 4,000 people in less than four years. So whether you like it or not, we're going to have great developers, and we're going to have rich people come, but we're going to have poor people come, too. We're going to have a balance. We cannot have a city that's only rich. Whether you guys like it or not, I know it sounds good, I know. But we cannot have a city, we are not Bellevue, we are not Redmond, and we are not Isiqua. Okay? We have all styles of homelessness and people in our city. So we have to come together so our city won't be trashy, won't look like other places, because other places can look like whatever, but that is not Kent, and that's not what we going to have in Kent. We going to take care of our city. And if our, our city government need help, who's going to help? We would help. Thank you.
Sean Kloss, followed by Kimberly Watson.
Sean Kloss, City of Kent. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Wow, the, we've a lot of passionate people here tonight. And, and the previous two speakers, I can, I can listen to you guys for hours, honestly. Thank you. I, I don't think there's any question that homelessness is an issue in Kent, let alone the, the city, let alone the state, let alone the world, right? We have that problem. We know we have that problem. As a community, we want to be there to help support that problem. But as a homeowner and the president of our HOA right across the street, we weren't given that opportunity to be part of the community. This was given to us with very little notice to prepare, like my neighbor said, four days for the first meeting. Here we are, we're, we're struggling to try to figure out what this means and what this means for us as homeowners. Not that we don't want to help homelessness, not that we don't want to be there as a city and help rally around it, but the reality is, it's not always what happens inside these tiny villages. Every week, I donate my time to St. James Church in Seattle, cook for the homeless. Once a quarter, I help the Union Gospel Mission, and I, too, have gone into some of these tiny concampments. Some are clean, some are not, but what surrounds them? When the 44% that don't make it leave, when they're kicked out, where do they go? They don't go far. They go into the surrounding communities. The crime does go up. I see it, I live it, I'm in Seattle every day. Our crime that happens in our neighborhood has already gone up in the last year and a half. Are we going to risk, I have a four-year-old child, are we going to risk that one more gunshots fired call that could be coming from or around the immediate area? We don't know. And, and as a resident, as a community member, I would like us to be involved a little bit more to talk, to learn, to see how we can involve it. Are there other spots in Kent that maybe are not right next to residential areas with families that already have increasing crime rates as they are? Right? What can we do together? And that's what I ask. I ask us not to be rushed, I ask us to, to look at it, to think about it, to discuss it as a community, and, and to get involved. Thank you.
Kimberly Watson, followed by Junior Preniscipio.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Kimberly Watson. I live in Kent, have two businesses in Kent. We opened our business in Kent as a church, and I found out that that was not good enough. So I shrink my church, I opened up a food bank. From my food bank, I turned that into clothing bank, furniture bank, because my homeless that I service now have homes. I have a neighbor that lives right next door to me. They have a, it's a pet hospital. Right next to the pet hospital, I saw this lady getting it out of her car. So I'm coming in my building one night, she's still in her car. I said, honey, what are you doing? Because she's a young girl, she's a college student, homeless. She had to make a decision, do I live in my car and still go to school? So on Monday, she showers, I make sure she has a shower, I don't charge her, she washes and dries her clothes, and we feed her. She goes to work every day because she works at the pet hospital. I have families that come into my food bank who are not homeless, but if they pay their rent, they don't have food to feed their kids. So this is the middle class. So they come, they volunteer their time. I thank Kent community because they send volunteers from parks and wrecks to help us to run the food line. I thank Kent Police Department, they spend their time trying to help decrease the line, because on Kent Kangley Road, we have the line backed up. And my line is not backed up with homeless people. My line is backed up with working-class people. I had to extend my hours, so when they get off work, I'm able to give them food so they can continue to go to work and continue to try to pay some form of rent. I have them calling me now because they can't pay their rent, because the rent has gone so high. So now, what we know is people being stable are not homeless. Thank God for the tiny houses, because I have to call Kingdom Gathering to help, Helping Hand Food and Clothing Bank, to pay rent, to help these people to maintain homes so that they're not homeless, they're not on drugs, they have children, they're trying to work every day. The state is sending us help to come over to help with the food bank so that they can help continue to, to go to work, to find them services. So our responsibility as a community, whether we live in Kent, we work in Kent, I live in Kent, I work in Kent, I got two businesses in Kent, and we have to take ownership of helping every, each and every person that works with us. Whether they're homeless, or they have a little, they have a lot. I've seen people come, they have Lexuses coming in my line to get food. So this is just not about homelessness. This is about us as a community being loyal to one another. When times are high and times are low.
Thank you. Junior Preniscipio, followed by Tanvir Sanga. Okay, so Junior's not here, so Tanvir Sanga.
Wow, it is intimidating up here. Mayor Ralph, President Boyce, and council members and community, my name is Tanvir Sanga. I live in Kent. For the last three years, I live in the development where two of my fellow members were already spoken, right across from St. James Church. Been there for three years, moved from, from Lacey, where I was living since about 2000. So I want to reiterate something that my, my neighbors had said, which is, the flyer for the, for the Tiny House Village that had a Zoom meeting, we received it days before it was, the, the meeting was supposed to happen. Even with that, many of us couldn't attend, and because of our neighbors who have a strong Facebook group, we were able to get information to be here tonight to realize that this is on the agenda. Otherwise, a lot of our neighbors, as previously said, are unaware and frankly are scared. Now, I also want to say that I have an 18-month-old son, and I have another one on the way, so a lot of my thought and my fear goes into providing a suitable area for them to grow. grow. And I'm proud to be in Kent. My wife's been here since, uh, for as long as I can remember, uh, and, and they are true members of this community. Councilmember Trauner earlier said that there was, uh, people staying on the buses, but then had to reiterate that it's okay, the buses are safe. You had to reiterate that because right now, the perception is there are people who don't feel safe in, in public areas, right? I also agree with Councilmember Fisher who was saying, mental health awareness is, is a much needed, um, is much needed in our community. We need to promote ways to benefit those most impacted, including LGBTQ members. However, we can't forget our existing members. I think of it as, uh, being on an airplane, you know, putting a mask on yourself before you help others. And my uncle was homeless in LA. We brought him up here to, back in 2008, I wanna say, and it was a struggle to kinda help him and get the resources needed. So I do feel the need and he was finally able to get on his feet, but it took a toll and it was very, very difficult on our family and on trying to find resources. So there is a need there. Coming from Olympia, there was and still is a huge housing crisis and the homeless community there, from what I've seen, um, my parents don't feel safe walking around. I don't want that to be Kent. I want this to be a smart and thought out, which I, I believe we, you guys have the resources to do, but it needs to be in the right area and not where we're encumbering on a current residence to help someone out when, when we might not feel as, as safe. I'm a, a proud sick American and, um, and we have a strong community here. One of our values is service and I believe in service, that's my number one core value. We can be of service to our community members, but this is not the way. As Dave mentioned earlier, we feel steamrolled and this is really frightening. We want to make sure there's a, a place for this, but we want to make sure that the right, right voices are heard. That's my time, but thank you guys so much for the, for the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh Castle, followed by Alicia Fig.
I wasn't actually gonna testify, but I heard a few things that I just wanna provide some clarification on. So first of all, I forgot to mention in my introduction that my partner and I own a house in Dequilla, which is five blocks from where Tiny House Village is, is being planned right now. So I am, I would actually technically qualify to be on that community advisory committee. So I, I just wanna put that out there, I'm, I'm a, I'm not, don't live in, um, don't live in here, but I live in South King County and I'm, and I'm pretty close to the city. So, um, so I wanna also just say that the, um, we, we knew at this meeting tonight, there wasn't gonna be a vote and this was a chance for the, you know, for the, um, the council to have a workshop. So we know that there's, the vote's gonna be later. We have a very robust community engagement process, so everybody that have expressed, um, you know, has provided feedback, um, both, both support and, and concerns, really deep concerns that I hear, um, that there's a whole process that we, we undergo. We're gonna open the site, you know, we're, we're planning the site roughly to open in, in the summer, sometime in the summer, in the mid, the middle of summer. And we have a big community meeting, we're gonna plan for that. We know that there's, the vote's gonna be later for this. We did do flyering for this so people, we could let people know about this meeting, but we knew that, you know, we have, we have all process where we start, we started this months in advance and, you know, the, the thing is, we hear from folks about, well, they didn't get enough notice or, you know, we tried to provide as early notice as possible to have these conversations with, with the neighbors. And we do, we do walk around five blocks in all directions of wherever we're, you know, wherever we cite a village, we knock on the doors, we have conversations with the neighbors and we provide that opportunity to, to share their concerns and have those conversations. I also wanna say the, um, 50%, the 56% exit rate to permanent housing, uh, it's very hard to get into permanent housing. There's the, we have an affordable housing crisis, there's not enough of it, um, even though we have 3,000 units. And the other numbers that are in that, the 44%, that's people who might have not given information, that's people who might have transferred to another form of shelter, that's people who might have moved temporarily in with family or friends. Some people went into a treatment facility, there's other, other numbers in there, there's a very small number of people that actually went back out to the streets. We try to avoid that as much as possible and we follow those residents who end up in that situation. We, we, case managers continue to follow and make sure that they're safe and, and that they continue to have a relationship with them. Lastly, um, the, one of the villages that was mentioned Georgetown Village, uh, that was a mess and everything, uh, that was in the, the news, uh, the, the news report that was out, that was one of those two sites I mentioned, that was one of those historic sites. If you go there now and if you go to Thella Village, you'll see all the progress that has been made to clean that up, um, to work with some of those clinical orders that we, we tried to get into, into, um, permanent housing. There's been a lot of progress made, we're very proud of. We have 16 sites across the region, three-quarters of them have none of these issues because they started off with a strong court of conduct that everyone, everyone signed a new for the start. They weren't, they didn't have previous operators. I'm trying to say, lastly, we're forming a community advisory council. I encourage everyone who's expressed concerns, uh, that I really, I really hear, to reach out to me and to apply to be on the CAC because we want you to be on that, we want you to hold us accountable and to make sure this village is a success for the community and the neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Council President Boyce.
Just wanna make one comment. I think Josh, you know, you guys, you talk about community, right? And, and it's pretty clear, I mean, even your presentation likes saying vote, right? So I just think, you know, there's both sides of the story. I can understand the frustration from the other side. So I'm, I'm hoping there a lesson learned, right, before they're gonna do something, but really make sure the community is involved, is, is aware and is part of the process. So I can understand some of the frustration three days later than you here. So I think your presentation stated that as well.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, totally. And we have police, by the way, that participate on the CACs, the police department. So we're gonna have, we wanna have regular updates, like we wanna work with the police and the community. I just wanna make that. Thank you. I just wanted to provide that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia Fig, followed by Brian Stewart. And then our final speaker tonight is TJ Peterson.
All right. I'm Alicia Fig. I was asked to come up here as a member of the neighborhood and say a few words. I'm reading off my phone because it's a lot easier. I said, I'm in favor of it because I see all the good that can come from it and hopefully it will become a great success. Right now, none of us know how it will turn out. A leap of faith is required. St. James is asking all of us in the area to approve of this project so that the leap of faith is not taken alone. We as a community need to approach this together with open hearts. I live in this area and I have an optimistic view on this project and looking forward to seeing this project come to its fruition.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian Stewart, followed by TJ Peterson.
Hey, how's everybody doing? Hi, Council. Hey there. Brian Stewart, I work for the city, also a resident in the city and, um, I work with youth and teens. So it's near and dear to my heart. I've been doing it here for the past 17 years. And, um, matter of fact, I met Ty Whitfield when she came into my teen center and she just wanted to see where her kids were going and make sure they were safe. And from there, uh, we started talking about the city, the needs, everything in it. And from there, uh, she's just been there for everything we do. I mean, I think we're on our eighth community Thanksgiving dinner, we've done plays together. When, when COVID hit, she was on the front lines. I mean, her, she is the heart of the city. This woman is the heart of the city. And if we have not just, not just the, the housing problem, but anything that this woman has a heart for, a vision for, wants to put her energy and effort into, as a city, I feel like we should, we should back it. I know we have to be strategic, I know we have to, you know, dot our, dot all our i's and, and t's and, and be sure of things, uh, but I can honestly say, um, I've, I haven't seen anyone work harder and with more heart, um, in our city. Everybody thinks that she's employed by the city, but, but she's, she's, she's not. So it just kind of a different perspective. I know someone said that she's a bonus, but it's, it's more like i- if she's a part of this thing, it's, it's gonna be successful because she won't let it fail. And I just, I just know her and, uh, the people that she's surrounded by. I think we've heard enough from everybody in the community, yes, there's, there's fears, uh, but deep down, there's a lot of people with, without a roof over their head. And when I was laying in bed last night, thinking about it, hearing the, uh, the wind pound on the side of the house and the, and the rain beating on the roof, it literally brought me to tears, thinking about, um, how blessed I am and that somebody else is inside a dumpster or trying to put a tarp over their head to, uh, keep, keep dry, dry and warm. And, uh, just for, for that alone, especially thinking about our youth, uh, let alone all our adults who are in need of shelter, I think that needs to be number one on our list before anything else. Thank you for your time.
You say you work for the city? Okay, cool.
Thank you. I, I, so I have a slight change here, TJ. I have somebody else that is before you, Nikita Taylor, and then followed by our final speaker, TJ Peterson.
I don't know all system employees, that's why I asked the question.
Okay, so I'm Navia Taylor. Um, I lived in Kent since 2009. I'm here just in support of the tiny home villages. I just wanted to say that I am an example of a homeless person, quote unquote. I was homeless when I was 24 and, um, if I didn't have, like I reached out to a Catholic community church and they helped me with resources. So I just wanted to say that I'm an example of a person who was homeless. Now I have my own business in Janitorial. I went back to school to finish my business degree and I'm doing pretty good with myself right now. I'm 28 and so if it wasn't for the community to just help me and just help me get back on my feet, I wouldn't be where I'm at today. So as far as just like looking at the homeless and being like, you know, they're beneath us, I just needed someone to help me because I did have things before I became homeless. I just kinda lost it all. But I'm just, I'm just here today to show you that I'm, I'm an example and just by helping, like you can do that with other people in the community. So thank you. You do do it.
Thank you. Unless anybody else is gonna speak tonight, TJ is our final speaker.
Thank you, Kim, you're awesome. Mayor, Council President, councilors, and my community. I'm heart warmed. These are some good people out here, these are some helpers. They're coming from a position of bravery and morality and strength. There, we have some fear in the community. I, I wanna wrap my arms around the people that are afraid of the future and afraid of changes. Let's throw a little bit of history here, the historical museum just opened, who, who? We gotta know where we come from so we know which way we're going. I wanna give a shout out to my girl, Louisa and SpongeBob. For a lot of times, I sat through meetings when we came up with the Kent Strategic Homeless Plan. I sat through the meetings and gathered out in front when we tried to have Union Gospel Mission take over the Resource Center. There's been a whole lot of no's, no, we can't do this. I wanna side with the hope, the strength, the bravery. I kinda wanna work with the people that wanna exclude our exclusionary zoning, predatory landlords, um, the financial sector, uh, the headwinds, the COVID, the, everything we're facing nowadays. The only way we're gonna get through this is together as a community. That's what kinda democracy is about and, um, I know we have a lot of good things going on. We have a lot of money from the state available, we have money from the county available. I'm interested in what South King County Housing and Homeless Program is gonna be doing. I'm interested in comparing that to the King County Housing Authority and what they're gonna be doing. We have a great human services department up here in the backside of Kent. They don't get nowhere near as much resources or credit. They do, I'm gonna give a shout out to Christine Horn. She was in the mayor's State of the Union speech, she's a very important part of this community, we need to know about that. Let's give them the tools that they need. Let's look out for the least amongst us. ADA was brought up, when we put in the elevator, it's not for the able-bodied people that can walk up the stairs, but it's nice to have it. When we put the curb cuts in, it's nice to have it. It's not, you know, it's for the least amongst us, it makes things better for everybody. We have a great opportunity of some of the strongest, smartest people and probably one of the best presentations I've seen in the last five, six years coming up here, inclusive. The notice that the neighbors got was because they notified the neighbors. Uh, we only heard about this workshop maybe a few weeks ago. So we didn't really have time to bring everybody on board, but we're looking to do that. Let's provide a safe place for people, let's relieve some of the pressure from the business community, the people living in the valley, the Parks Department, the money we spend, the police department, they could use some help. Martin versus Boise, the courts lays out the best way forward, best practices, I believe is here, the data is here. Let me give a shout out to our faith-based community and all of my neighbors who I just met and neighbors I've known for years and the work everybody's been doing. My God, Ty, thank you so much. If you guys have a better plan than these guys have, I'm all ears, we're all ears. Let's move the city forward in bravery and strength and not fear. Let's see, if you can say, say yes to this, let's see what you got. Thank you for the work you're all doing.
Thank you. Kim, do we have any other speakers? Thank you. Mayor, that was the last speaker beyond the public comments that were submitted. All right. So we do have, uh, three emails here from residents that live in, um, the area surrounding the church in opposition and raising questions. We will, um, admit those to the record. Is there a motion to put these, uh, emails into the record?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the emails have been submitted into the record. I do want to, um, for the neighbors that spoke to process, should the, the council has not made any decisions. Again, I think that that was in the presentation that there would be a vote tonight if, I think that's unfortunate because it has created concern and controversy where there should not be any. Should the council decide to move forward on this in any way, there will absolutely be a very robust, um, community process. There will be opportunity for additional comment, there will be opportunity, uh, for testimony, there, there will be a process because it would, um, require an ordinance change and, uh, variety of different forums, land use and planning, city council workshops, um, not going to happen overnight. So to the neighbors, please know that, um, there is a process for a reason and the city would follow that process should the council decide to move forward. But again, that has not, decision has not been made. So, um, with that, I wanna thank everyone that came out tonight for, uh, to provide public comment and when and if a decision is made by the council to move forward, there will be notice and opportunity. All right, we are going to move on in our agenda to the consent calendar. Uh, this is the item that council approves, things that have, uh, work that's been done at the committee level, uh, been, they've received presentations, had an opportunity to ask questions and things have passed out of those, uh, committees without controversy. We have items A through O. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
You took my thunder away. I'm gonna say zero, but that's okay.
I was trying to be nice to Pat. I want him to come back to work tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion in the consent calendar, approve item A through O.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry, consent calendar passes. Item number nine on our agenda is bids. We have three bids this evening. The first one is City of Kent, uh, firing range ventilation upgrade. And joining us is Chris Sprague. Thanks for your patience, Chris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, Council President, President Boyce and council members. My name is Chris Sprague. I work with the Police Department's Training Division. I also manage our firing range. Just kinda nice to know that if I blow this presentation, that the Parks Department will hire me? Off I go. Uh, I'm here to, I'm here to request awarding a contract for the Police Training Center Firing Range Ventilation Upgrade Project. Uh, our ventilation system is a very complex system in firing ranges and it's the most expensive thing in a firing range. Generally between 60 and 80% of the cost of a range is the ventilation system. It's essential for health and safety of range users and parameters are set by, uh, federal and state agencies, uh, for the health requirements of ranges. Our current system is older technology. In fact, uh, some of our system is, was commissioned when the Training Center was actually put into service in 1989. Because of the A- Because of the age of the system in recent years, it has required continuous maintenance, upgrades, and we've had breakdowns more frequently lately. This project will involve removing and disposing of almost all current components of the firing range and replacing it with new technologies, motors, ventilation, technology, air balancing systems, and filtration systems. This new system will also meet all safety standards required by federal and state safety agency laws. We received one bid for the project from a company called Westmark Construction Incorporated for a total of $448,968.19. We recommend awarding this contract to Westmark Construction Incorporated. And what questions can I answer for you?
All right. Any questions for Chris? Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just put a candy in my mouth, sorry about that. Thank you for the presentation. Is there a reason we only had one bid, or is it just a very specific job that only certain companies are able to do? Is that what it is?
That's exactly it. It's a very technical job that very few companies can do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. My question is about your skills in mowing lawns, the parks.
Are you saying I blew this? Wow, ouch.
Just kidding. No, my question is, actually, this is a bit over the engineer's estimate. Is that just because of the tax, or is there another reason?
The, yes. This project started a couple of years ago, and it's been ongoing, and when our first estimates came in on this, it was before everything that's hit us, and the cost and availability of everything right now has shot through the roof. The original estimate did not include taxes, and we threw in the taxes also.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? All right, then a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the City of Kent Police Firing Range Ventilation Upgrade Project to Westmark Construction Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $448,968.19, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the police chief and city attorney.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, you do not have to apply in the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two additional bids. The first one is Down East Side Channel Restoration Final Phase. Yay. Joining us for both of these will be Chad Beer and our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Excited to be here tonight to talk about the final phase of Downey Farmstead. For those of you who've been around for a while, it's been a long time. We've been talking about this project for well over 10 years. Nice thing about this is almost none of the projects was paid for with city dollars. Habitat and Flood Improvement Project paid for with grant funds from the county and the state. So excited to have this final bid. We had seven bids received. Pictures showing here on the screen of kind of befores and afters. Obviously, it was a nice site. Before we got started, we're going to get the rest of the excavation done this summer and have it ready for planting. So give it a few years and it'll look great out there. Again, seven bids received, a low bid to, hope to award to Olson Brothers Excavation. They have done work out there for us in the past, and we did get a good bid on this one, so excited about it.
All right. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the Down East Side Channel Restoration Final Phase Project to Olson Brothers Escavating, Inc. in the amount of $3,129,996.84, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six, zero. All right, 84th Avenue South or East Valley Highway Slump Repair Project. This is another one, long time coming.
Long time. Folks who drive down East Valley Highway, we're excited to hear if you've been past the Les Schwab or Tacoma Screw Products Stores over the last, oh, seven or eight years. The area out there had an issue with an underlying metro sewer line that has been since repaired, and we've allowed it to settle. It's stopped, and we're now prepared to go out there and fix it this summer. So, very excited. We built this project in 2009 and 10, got it completed, and then it started to sink. Wasn't related to the project, it's just related to an old sewer line. So, again, that's been repaired, put out for bids. We received five bids with the low bid for Active Construction, Inc. Came in just under the engineer's estimate, and Active's done workforce, actually did the fourth of what was roundabout. So, excited to have them out there and get this fixed, and get the road back up to where it should be.
All right. Any questions? All right, then a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the 84th Avenue South, East Valley Highway Slump Repair Project to Active Construction, Inc. in the amount of $466,466, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Item number 10 is executive session. We do not have an executive session this evening. Item number 11 is a closed session to discuss collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 42.30.140. This next agenda item is a closed session to discuss collective bargaining. A closed session is one concerning a topic that is not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. Because the session is not subject to the OPMA, it is not technically an executive session, but it is equally not open to the public. Council will not adjourn. Now adjourn for 10 minutes to enter into a closed session. After the 10 minutes, a public meeting will be called back to order, and it is anticipated that there will be council action after the public meeting resumes. With that, we are ending the regular meeting and entering into closed session. If I could have everyone not related to this. If I could have everyone not related to this.